Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Crescent City. It's Tuesday, January 19th. And, Madam Clerk, if you would please take the role.
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Burns.
Present.
Councilmember Westfall.
Here.
Councilmember Slert.
Here.
And Mayor Shalhoun.
And I am here, thank you.
You're welcome for the record. Councilmember Murray is out sick.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Burns, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would please stand, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the body for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with virtue and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you all had a nice three-day weekend with the Martin Luther King holiday. We are going to, well actually, Ms. Deputy City Attorney, would you please report out any actions taken in closed session?
Yes, we did have one final action and the council voted four to zero to refund sewer fees paid by Shirley O'Neill for the years 2007 and 2008.
Thank you very much. Moving on to, I was actually hoping to, and this fell off the radar, but the acknowledgement for our previous planning chairperson, I was hoping that we would be able to do that tonight.
Maybe she has declined, she has indicated that she does not want any special recognition and does not want to come back, so.
Well, if she's watching, I just want her to know that her service to the city is very much appreciated, so, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to consent calendar, the approval of the regular minutes for January 4th, 2010, approval of warrant claims, January 5th through January 19th, and approve bi-weekly payroll.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar with a couple items in the meeting minutes.
Okay.
For page seven, second paragraph from the bottom, second sentence, I believe it should be "she" since it was talking about you, Madam Mayor, instead of "he." And then, on page eight, the second paragraph, the last sentence, just seemed to be completely out of context relative, the discussion above was regarding the wastewater treatment plant, and then it says Mayor Shalhoun stated that a presentation to the Chamber Board of Directors would be appropriate. And I didn't remember that, it just, the two didn't seem to go together.
Where at, I'm sorry?
The second paragraph from the top, the last sentence.
I think Kelly was talking about making a presentation maybe to the chamber, at a chamber luncheon or something.
Regarding the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually did state that the Chamber Board of Directors had requested a short presentation on an update on the wastewater treatment plant project, which we are proceeding with.
Is it to the Chamber Board or to?
It is just to the Board of Directors.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the final one is, three lines below the center of the page, the sentence starts, Councilmember Burns also stated, and I actually think it was myself that made that comment.
Where at, I'm sorry?
Three lines down from the middle of the page.
Because I did not tour Albert Seaford.
Yeah, yeah, it was Councilmember Slert and Councilmember Murray that toured the Albert Seaford Plant.
And that was a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second with the additions.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. I'm sorry, three to one. Okay, we are going to quickly adjourn to the Housing Authority, which is item number five. Please note that four councilmembers are present and Councilwoman Murray is absent due to illness. And I will take public comment on the Crescent City Housing Authority, if there are any. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I need a motion to approve the consent calendar, which is the regular meeting minutes of December 7th and warrant claims for December 8th, 2009 through January 19th, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. There is no business for this evening, so we will adjourn from the Housing Authority and reopen as the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. And please note the same are in attendance. And now I will take public comment on the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to consent calendar, which is approval of our minutes and warrant claims for December 7th and December 8th, 2009 through January 19th, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, passes four to zero. We have no executive directors report this evening. Do we have any redevelopment agency items, Mr. Butler?
No, not this evening, Mayor, but.
And there are no public hearings as well.
That's right. Yeah, you will be, some exciting news, there will be, coming up in February and March, you start to see the resurrection of the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency, and you start seeing things other than just the minutes and the warrant register, and moving forward on that.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we will adjourn as the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as the Crescent City City Council and move on to reports. And this evening, we have a guest, Gina Zatola, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow councilmembers. Couple things that are coming up for the chamber, we have our annual dinner, which we like to think of it more of a chamber membership appreciation dinner. And that's going to be on January 30th, starting at 5:30 PM, I hope you can make it. It's going to be at the Cultural Center, of course. Coming up in March, we're going to have our Economic Summit, and that's going to be on Saturday, March 27th. That'll run approximately from 8:00 AM till 2:00 PM, and we're currently working on exactly what that's going to look like, so you'll be able to hear more about that in the coming months.
27th?
27th, yes. You do know we will be having Dennis Mullins coming again to speak, and of course, he's from the EDD, and he gives us a lot of really good information. I know it sometimes can be dry, but it's relevant information that we all need to hear regarding our community, our county, and how we fare with the rest of the state. So that'll be happening. Just some kind of quick updates on visitors, I always like to tell you about who's coming in and what we're seeing, if it's decreasing from last year, increasing. For the month of October, we actually had an eight, almost eight and a half percent increase. This is all physical visitor accounts, people actually coming through the doors. November, we're up about, almost 10%, and December, we're up about 8.62%. As far as visitor packets goes, we have mailed out, just for the month of October, 293, which was, of course, an increase of almost 230%. We had an increase for November of 468% and an increase for December of 108%. And again, this is all attributed to Visitor Bureau and their marketing, and a lot of this is coming from Sunset Magazine. So we're still seeing a lot of information requests trickling in as people are, you know, probably planning right now for their summer vacations, so that's good, we're still seeing those.
Gina, can you, is any of that information downloadable so that you can send like a PDF instead of having to actually mail it, save the cost of postage?
Not really, it's not. I mean, we send our map, we send now the trail guide and the visitor packet, depending, you know, we send out a basic packet, if they want more information, then it does cost them $6, which usually barely covers the postage. And then it's a larger packet with more information of lodging, hotels, and everything. You know, we usually send them even the chamber directory, so they have all the relevant information. Eventually, I'd love to see it be downloadable, so people can get it off our website. At this point, I don't, I don't see that in the near future at all. In the future, yes, I think that can be a possibility.
Just maybe when you purchase maps in the future, maybe they could provide you with a digital.
Right.
Format. I know when we did the birding trail guide, we have that in a digital format, so it actually, the actual map can be emailed.
And I think that would be great, if we could even do that with the lodging guide, the dining guide, all of that, if that could be taken directly off the Visitor Bureau website, I think that would be a lot easier and obviously, a little more eco-friendly.
Yeah.
And we want to try to make things as green as we can. So that's definitely something to discuss for the future, so I appreciate that comment. So we had a lot of increase, relocation packets down, all the way across the board for the three months. I don't know if it's just our great weather we're having right now or what, but location packets have been down. Toll-free increase, toll-free, people calling on the toll-free line to get information, find out more about our community, and/or request a relocation or visitor packet. Those have gone up all the way across the board, 25% in October, an increase, 80% in November, and almost 131 in December. And again, it could be attributed to some of the marketing that's taking place, whether it's in Northwest Travel or it's in Sunset Magazine. So we're seeing an increase in that.
Great. Any questions for Gina?
No.
Nope.
Well, I want to take this opportunity while I'm here right now to thank all of you for your continued support of the chamber, it's really important. And we just all want you to know that we appreciate it and we see it, so thank you.
Are you, just while you're here, it just came to my mind, are you, is a chamber going to be participating in the tri-agency City of Crescent City idea for this crab wine and cheese festival?
I don't think we're asked necessarily to participate, I think we are asked to, for our blessing and support, and I think the chamber as a whole was going to support the events, and add emails and do what we can to support it, so in that aspect, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Public comment, any member of the audience is invited to address the council on any matter within our jurisdiction for the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name, if you live in the city or the county, for the record. And please limit your comment to, comment to three minutes. And for those of you that may have not participated in public comment before, we have a light system up here on the podium, you're given the green light, when you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will go off, and when your three minutes is up, the red light comes on, and we just ask that you wrap up your comment. So is there any public comment this evening? Mr. Apperson, welcome.
My name is Eric Apperson, and I do not live within the city limits. Mayor Shalhoun, honorable members of the City Council, Mr. Butler, and other distinguished guests. As most of you know, I've been serving with the Police Department here in Crescent City for about nine years now. Well over half of that time, I have also served as the Crescent City Police Officers Association President. I've participated in negotiations for the past three labor contracts between the City of Crescent City and the Crescent City Police Officers. Needless to say, this duty is often labor-intensive and tedious in nature. I am here today on behalf of the police officers of the Crescent City Police Department. I have found these recent negotiations to be a cut above the rest. If you can believe it, I even got to the point where I looked forward to the meetings. Rod Butler and Laura Haven were a pleasure to deal with, they communicated efficiently, professionally, and relayed to the bargaining unit that the CCPD officers are appreciated and important employees of the Crescent City workforce. Not only did the meetings go smoothly, but the contract looks great. I'm here to simply say thank you to the mayor, the council, the city manager, and all that were involved with the process. Your efforts and sentiments were greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Eric. Well, I think that you had support from day one, when I got on this council, the Police Department, as a department of the city, and I think that my, my feelings were echoed by my fellow council sitting up here. And we knew that it was time to show our appreciation for the work that you do for the city, and, you know, the, the safety risk that you present yourselves in every single day. And we knew that your contract was really not, did not meet the service that you're providing, and so we were very happy to be able to provide you with a little additional pay and bring you up to a little better standard of living, and we're happy that you're employed by the city, and very happy, and would like to congratulate you personally, because I know you are going to be a father very soon. So congratulations, I know you're going to be a great dad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to continuing business. And before I do so, I would like to entertain a motion, actually, I'd like to make a motion to put an emergency item on our agenda this evening. We have an anniversary for the Crescent City Municipal Pool, coming up in February, on February 7th. And I would like to put a new item of business under new business on the agenda this evening, for this council to consider a free swim day in honor and celebration of that one-year anniversary. And to also, as a thank you to our community and to the local, promote our pool foundation for their extreme efforts in helping us move this forward, and to thank our staff as well. So if I could, I would like to make that motion, to add that to new business.
Second that motion, that we add item, what, 15A or whatever?
I'm actually going to put it as like a 10A.
All right.
If you don't mind, under new business. Okay, can I get a poll vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Westfall? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalhoun?
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to continuing business, consider and adopt second reading of ordinance number?
751.
751, entitled in ordinance adopting zoning code amendment 0903, creating zoning code chapter 17.41, which is in the landscaping zoning code, to include a water-efficient landscape ordinance as mandated by the State of California. For those of you that were not here previously, this council does not agree with this ordinance, however, we are being forced to adopt it by the State of California. We do however, have plans to move forward and have discussions with this, with Sacramento to adopt something that is more suitable for our neck of the woods. Ms. Rambo?
Thank you very much. Sorry, first reading of ordinance to 751 was held at your January 4th meeting. Simply bringing it back for its mandatory second reading at this point, we recommend that you go ahead and do that.
I think we, we had our say last time, and I'm going to open it up to public comment at this time, if there's any public comment on the landscaping ordinance. Okay, seeing none, we'll close, I'm sorry, were you, is he moving? Thought he was going to stand up, okay. Close public comment, and I'll take a motion to adopt the second reading.
I'll make that motion to adopt the second reading, with the one caveat, that I still think that it's a completely inappropriate ordinance for this city.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second?
I will second the motion on the inappropriate ordinance that we are adopting.
State of California hasn't always known to be appropriate, so. All right, can I get you to poll the vote, please?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Inappropriately, yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalhoun?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item number nine this evening, consider and introduce the first reading, which is ordinance number?
752.
752, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, finding the approval of zoning code amendment 0901 exempt from the California, California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA, and adopting zoning code amendment 0901 to amend our zoning code, to revise chapter 17.04 and the definitions of the zoning code, adding definitions relative to small wind zoning, wait, wait, I'm getting lost, to small wind energy conversion systems, and replace expired chapter 7.17.48.040. Lot of mumbo jumbo.
Mm-hmm, little mumbo jumbo.
Sum it up for us.
Okay, small wind energy conversion, sorry, systems ordinance was first brought to you at the November 16th, 2009 meeting. At that meeting, there were concerns brought up about some of the restrictions and the regulations. And City Council asked that it be returned to the Planning Commission for consideration. Staff did return to the Planning Commission, however, Planning Commission voted not to change the ordinance. So what you have in front of you is the same thing that you saw back in November. I did talk, one of the issues that came up was the view restrictions from the California Coastal Commission. I did speak with their staff, and they did reluctantly acknowledge that if it's not located in the coastal zone, they really don't have a jurisdiction over it.
Right.
So, like I said, it was reluctantly acknowledged. So that issue seems to be taken care of. And as you see in the ordinance, they're not permitted in the coastal zone at all, so coastal commission shouldn't be an issue, whether or not you can see it or not.
Right, but doesn't the ordinance talk about the view shed?
Right, it is currently still included in there, because like I said, Planning Commission did not change anything, so.
Okay, so I'm not sure I'm real clear why the Planning Commission wouldn't change the ordinance if the coastal commission agreed that they do not have the jurisdiction of the view shed.
Well, actually, a couple of the planning commissioners are here and are prepared to speak to that.
Sure, absolutely. Ms. Raina?
I want to vote for her.
Thank you.
My feeling regarding the coastal commission issue is that down the road, under different circumstances, they could theoretically raise the issue. I don't think they ever will, but if you read the coastal commission's rules and regulations, we're just adhering to their rules, which they're not going to enforce, very much like the landscaping issue, which we're not going to enforce. I don't think there was ever a question of denying someone the right to put in a system because it was visible from, you know, the parking lot and Battery Point. I think that.
But Kirk, wasn't that the premise of what is in this ordinance, is that?
Well, it says in the coastal commission regulations, that they seem to feel they have some sort of hold over non-coastal property.
Okay, well, we, we, I don't think, want them to have hold on, on as little as possible, so if they're agreeing that they do not have jurisdiction over the view shed outside of the coastal zone, why would we not remove that from the ordinance?
Because, A, it's a staff comment, it's not, it's not the coastal commission itself. It could go to the full coastal commission and be heard in five years, and I don't know what the outcome would be. And I think if anyone wanted to pursue it because they were claiming that it was in violation of their rules, I think they would back down at that point. But whether it's in there or not, I don't think, to me, it doesn't make a difference, and I couldn't see going through the whole process of more public hearings to amend it down. I think there were other issues, like the restrictions, that I was more focused on. I never thought the coastal commission issue was that important. I don't think we were being restrictive, I think we were trying to weigh, you know, restrictions with being as generous as we could without upsetting, you know, people who were afraid of visual pollution. And I think that's the focus that I've heard that people don't like. It's not whether the coastal commission could come in with their heavy-fisted hand, although I like the coastal commission, you know, I think they're wonderful people. And I, the reason I couldn't see any changes to be made, is I think the way we set it up with one horizontal access or three vertical, which are very small in size, and the requiring of a use permit, everything that comes to us, you know, we will look at with those restrictions in mind. I can't see people spending the money to put in three vertical access units. I don't know that I can see people spending the money to put in one horizontal unit, but they still have to come through the use permit process, so that's why I was not, you know, interested in making any changes. We worked long and hard on this through five or six or seven different planning commissioners, and lots of hearings, and lots of public input. And we can't please everybody, we know that. So we tried to strike a balance. That's my comments.
Thank you.
I agree with Kirk on, on a lot of that. One of the things was, just recently, the coastal commission is holding up Santa Cruz County. commission is holding up Santa Cruz County on wind turbines, but they were claiming it's coastal scenic view. Leaving that in place there shows we have one, but we can go by permit on case-by-case. And I think that's the key language there under B on approval, that we do it on a case-by-case basis in any zone outside the coastal zone. And the other thing is with this ordinance, I think it's important to remember manufacturer specifications. That was one of the reasons we didn't change some of that with the height, because the manufacturers recommended being away from a structure at least the length of the tower of that. Now, in the future, wind energy is changing every day. There may be manufacturers that say, "You don't have to do that anymore." So we would do it by case-by-case. There might be a turbine right next to a house. That's a turbine.
So, I'm not as concerned with the rest of the ordinance as I am about the coastal commission's jurisdiction. So now you're saying to me that in Santa Cruz, the coastal commission is holding up their wind turbine energy ordinance because they do have jurisdiction from the coastal zone?
It's not clear. I think it's in the coastal zone. They're still fighting that. But Santa Cruz County is not as far ahead as we are. That's one of the reasons I wanted to leave that in there, is that it shows that we do have that, but we can still do it by case-by-case.
When you say we do have that, what do you mean?
The, what you were talking about, about the, by the coastal scenic resource, so that it is, will be placed so that it is visible.
My concern is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my understanding was that the coastal commission was saying, anywhere in the coastal zone, if you can see the wind turbine outside of our jurisdiction, we have jurisdiction, and you cannot put it up.
Right, that's what they were saying.
And we're saying, no, you can't do that. If it's not in the coastal zone, you don't have jurisdiction over a wind turbine being erected.
You're correct. That's correct. Now, I see the coastal...
So, now they're saying, you're right, we don't have jurisdiction outside the coastal zone. So, we should be able to remove that from the ordinance. Otherwise, you're keeping it in there and allowing for interpretation on whether or not the coastal commission has jurisdiction. That's my perception.
And our thought was that we keep it in there for interpretation, that we do it by permit. And that's just the thought. Remember, the coastal commission said that we couldn't put up the veterans monument. I mean, we could, and now they're saying we can't. So we, we left that in there so we can interpret what we can do. That was our, that was our thinking. It might not be right. I mean, but that was our thinking.
But you, we don't have the right to interpret their, their right. If it's in, if it's in here, it's, we're giving them the right to have jurisdiction, in my mind.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. The wording might not be proper, but that was our, that was our thinking.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Sure.
Kirk Roberts, as I mentioned last November when you introduced it, I had talked to Jim Baskin about this. And he said that what they want to control, and I told you this last November, I'll repeat it for the record, they want to control the large wind farms like occur at Tehachapi and Altamont, from being put in downs south of Fort Bragg, on that whole stretch of one where there's lots of wind, and they're up on the hill, and there's no houses around. And that's what their, that's what their focus is. Their focus isn't on Kirk Roberts putting a small wind turbine in his backyard. They don't want to see a wind farm in the coastal scenic view area. I think, I think that's why they have that language, not to come after us. And they said they wouldn't, so, okay.
Thank you. Anything from the council?
I actually do have a couple items. I've reviewed and considered this issue thoroughly since our recent meeting. And I do have some serious concerns about the small wind energy systems. It just seems to me that there are some loopholes that haven't been clarified. And I appreciate the work that the planning commission has put into this whole issue. It's dynamic, and I believe fully in the planning commission's decisions to monitor or manage or make that use permit approval process. But it is about striking a balance. And I'm very concerned that we've recently been identified as one of the 20 prettiest towns, I think by Forbes magazine. And I think that's a special recognition. And I'm concerned that, what is the view of our city and what's the vision? And for me, I have a problem if we're going to have a whirlybird kind of character. My concerns are the densities within the city, concerns about possibility of being in front yards, densities within individual property, separation of wind towers, the cumulative effect visually. And, I mean, we continually fight blight in our community, and I'm all for green and energy efficiency. But I'm, I guess I'm concerned that we're proposing to create the potential for visual pollution at a relatively small personal gain. And so I have a hard time supporting the notion. It's not like it's the Dutch windmills of Europe that have a picturesque kind of quality. And so I think there might be an appropriateness in the county, and I'm interested in what the city and the county working together might achieve, or if there's an appropriateness for creating a regional wind farm somewhere that doesn't impact the entire city. So those are my concerns.
So, how would you like to move forward?
Well, I would recommend denying the small wind energy systems at this time.
Yeah, I just wanted to find out. Did you have any comments, Ms. Westfall?
You know, I've always got comments. Following up with what Charles said, I'd really like to see a wind farm created. And I don't know how that would be possible with this ordinance. I don't understand it.
Well, I don't think you're ever gonna find a wind farm within the city limits. That would be something that would have to fall in the county.
Yeah, alright.
Which would not be our jurisdiction. But we definitely can have that joint conversation on how we can work together. I don't know if they have, do they have a wind, small wind?
The county doesn't. Yeah. Maybe we can include that. Oh, that joint meeting's already got a book's agenda.
It'll be an agenda item that includes several of these, the wind energy, the landscape, efficiency.
Right, yeah. We plan on having that discussion at our joint meeting, but anything from you, Dennis?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I don't want to necessarily separate this from, from the county on some of this, because if you go off Pebble Beach, for example, the city limits end out there, and then it goes right into the county. So it wouldn't make sense for us to develop one standard and the county a different standard. So at Pebble Beach, which a lot of, you know, you drive out there, and people don't even know when you go from city to county a lot of times.
Yeah, so adjacent lands.
So adjacent lands is one of my concerns, because if the county passes a different ordinance that allows multi-hor horizontal systems on one parcel, and that's right next to a city that has, and I know the city and county are different, I know that, but would it be a good thing in my mind to at least sit down with the county and see what they're planning for their issues on, on wind energy systems? I'd like to do that. And I think my, my question, because I brought that up at the last meeting when we talked about this, about the coastal area, if someone's standing there and they could see a turbine generating power a half mile away with that effect of view shed. And I think, I think that was answered for me. And I think I agree with the statement that if, if that's true, if the coastal commission doesn't want to deal with stuff outside the coastal, I'd like to have that, you know, either out of the ordinance so that we don't give them the ability to say, "Well, look, it's right here. You know, it's not allowed." So I don't necessarily want to just send this back to the planning commission, because I know they've put tons of work into it. And I think it's a great, it really helps us along since we had nothing. But I'm not necessarily willing to just pass it right now. I think we need something.
Well, it's definitely a foundation and a starting point and full of a lot of work. Ms. Rambo, have you met with the county regarding this?
I have had discussions with the planner over there, and this time they don't have any plans to come up with a wind ordinance of their own. If we approached them, you know, I'm sure they'd be happy to talk about it.
They're just not, they just don't want to talk about it right now, or are they just waiting to see what happens here?
Well, part, they did mention that they were curious what would happen with ours, but I think part of it is also just the current condition over in the planning department with, you know, the people that have left and the new people coming on. It wasn't a really good time.
It's not a high priority for them right now.
Basically.
So am I, I'm gonna take public comment in a moment, but am I hearing from at least two of you that you'd like to table this until discussions can take place with the county?
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think this, our backs are against the wall. I don't think we have people waiting in the wings to put up turbines.
Um, not anymore.
Well, I know.
The one person we did, it was given approval for his, so.
So we still have this case-by-case basis?
Okay. I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Mr. Lonsdale?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Lonsdale, and I live in Crescent City. If you all have received correspondence that I sent out to you over the weekend, if you need for me to go into any detail, and also, Councilmember Slert has alluded to several of the points that I was concerned about. My only comment would be that I would hope that you would take the five recommendations that I provided to the council for tightening up the ordinance into consideration when you do move to adopt it. And secondly, I hope that, you know, in our concern about what the coastal commission is gonna do, we don't lose sight of what happens in the rest of the community. And I think it's a good idea to make sure that the county and the city, especially in the urbanized area, are in sync. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lonsdale, I have to, I have to ask you, what did you do prior to retirement?
Um, I worked the job.
I had a feeling either that or an attorney. So efficient. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Roberts?
Kirk Roberts, living in the city, planning commissioner. I guess I'd like to know what we do when we get our first new application. And my feeling is right now that we deny it, and let them appeal it to you, and you make the decision. And that's gonna become the basis of any future, whatever you decide, is gonna become the basis for any future application. You'll end up setting the parameters. And I don't think that's a good idea.
I don't either.
I go back to the Rumiano cheese tower application, where a 70-foot height variance or zoning change was pushed through and never used, in a time of push, push, push. I just, you know, I don't see any reason to not approve this and then come back and give us specific ideas of what you want amended and let us work on it. We're gonna get an application. And there's two people out there selling these things actively now. So sooner or later, and probably sooner, we're gonna get an application for a permit. And we have nothing to go on right now, other than probably zoning height. And I don't think we could even go to sideline, you know, vertical laid down on the side, the way it sits now, because these things are very securely mounted. And we're trying to keep them totally within the property. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council. What's your pleasure?
It'd be my preference to table this so that we can get it right. Ultimately, I think it has too large of implications on the neighborhoods of our city and the future of our city to rush into it and not have things coordinated accordingly.
Anything from you, too?
I kind of said what I wanted to say, as far as Kirk asked what should be, you know, direction given. And my direction would be to look at the prohibited locations and the coastal scenic resource areas. Nothing should be visible from those areas. And so I'd, if the coastal zone doesn't want that in there, I'd like to see that gone, because it gives them in the future.
Mm-hmm.
And then the idea of, if you can't put something in a front yard because of, Charles, weren't you alluding to the front yard placement of a turbine?
Right.
Again, that's a, if someone has a house that doesn't allow them to put one in the backyard because the distance from the base to the corresponding or adjacent property is less than the height, it may be prohibited unless it wasn't a front yard. So I don't necessarily want to restrict someone because there are systems that look nice. I mean, they don't have to be a horizontal. They can be a vertical system that looks very, very pleasing. So.
I would just say that I hate to tie the planning commission's hands at this point and leave them with nothing. And at the same time, this is my fourth year in office, and I don't know of, I know of very few times that we've sent something back to the planning commission. So I would hope that if this council is going to send something back to the planning commission, that there would be more efficient communication between the planning department to work with the council and the planning commission to come up with something, rather than it just going back and then coming back to us with the same thing. Because it was obvious that if the council chose to send it back, they wanted to see some things addressed.
The other issue is, I have no problem tonight, working on this with the omission of, of the, I guess it would be D3.
The coastal commission's jurisdiction, removing that?
And then always knowing that our ordinances can always be amended. And when we work with other agencies, whether it be harbors, counties, or sovereign nations, that we can always work on our wind energy system ordinance in conjunction with those other entities as we need to, and still adopt and change ordinances to meet the needs. I do want to support the, you know, the planning commission. So I guess what I want to do at this point is approve 17.48.040, small wind energy systems, small wind energy conversion systems with the omission of D3. That's a motion I'd like to make, along with the definitions, 1704.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And would you please pull this vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
No.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Shalom?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, so, just a note of, of, um, thank you, first of all, to the Planning Commission, because I know there has been months and months and months of work that's gone into this. I do not feel that we've jumped into it, although it's new technology, it's new to our area, um, so it is a work in progress, I feel. Um, but again, if the council sends something back, I would hope that the planning department would have, uh, a little more communication between the two so that we could come up with something that is going to be pleasing to both ends.
I'm going to jump in there and say that the planning staff did take back the information, the requests from the council and, and the commissions, and we've got two or three of them here tonight that can speak to this, their response. I think they clearly understood what the commission, or what the council comments were. And the commission said, "We understand that, but we don't want to make those changes. We're comfortable with the process that we went through." So, I just don't want the staff to get bashed unfairly.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to do that. I'm trying to say if Mr. Slert has eight items he feels that should, should be addressed, then that information should go to our planning department and that information needs to be passed on to the Planning Commission in the process instead of at the end. So, just maybe that little more open dialogue would have been a little more efficient. Uh, I, that's my point. Thank you. We know. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to more business. Ten A, um, the pool. Uh, February seventh is our first anniversary of having the pool remodeled. Uh, we've had, uh, we have an absolutely beautiful building. We're having continuing issues with our spa, but we have a solution, we believe, and we'll be talking about that later on in this evening. But I believe that the premier pool foundation is, has done a tremendous job in moving the project forward. Matt and his staff at the city pool have just been great. And our public works department, uh, has just really provided us and our community with a beautiful pool. So, I thought it would be kind of, uh, a good idea following up on a suggestion from Connie McDonald, that this, the council approve opening a pool up on a Sunday. Unfortunately, February seventh is Super Bowl Sunday. And, uh, so, I was thinking, well, maybe we could open it up from like eleven to two or twelve to three, because Super Bowl doesn't start till like three fifteen.
Yeah, great big big screen put in there.
Yeah, exactly. But I thought it would be a, a nice thing to have a community free swim day on our anniversary. The POP, uh, uh, committee would like to participate in maybe providing, uh, bottled water and maybe some nice fruit and snacks for the kids or whatever that participate. Um, and so, uh, that's my suggestion. And then we have Connie here and also Matt here to kind of talk to us about the details of what that might look like. So, I'm going to open it up for Matt.
I do like Councilmember Burns's idea of big screen. If we could make that happen, that would be awesome. The original plan was to do this on February seventh, but because of the Super Bowl, POP asked me tonight if it could be switched to February twenty-first. So, that's something you can consider. You covered most of the ideas. They want to have the bottled water and the fruit there. We do need to decide how to open it up, um, whether we want to do tickets like the radio stations have done in the past, or if we just want to do a first come, first served basis. Either one of those would work.
I personally think tickets would be better because then if you have a ticket, you know you get to swim. And, you know, if you have all these little kids standing in line and then they're turned away, I think they would feel bad, so I'd rather do tickets.
Thank you. That way, we don't have to be the bad guys.
Yeah.
Can't you even number tickets, one through whatever? Or would you just hand them a ticket?
What you do is you promote it for a couple of weeks before the event and you say, "You can get your tickets at Deloitte Office Supply or the city water department or, you know, wherever."
But let's just say the limit on the pool is two hundred and what?
Well, a hundred.
Okay, let's say a hundred. You give out a hundred tickets, eighty-five kids are going to show up. So, then you still have a capacity for fifteen more. How are you going to let the fifteen in?
What we've done in the past is, um, we did a two-hour KCRE sponsored and a two-hour KPOD sponsored, and each of those had a hundred tickets. We had kids show up that didn't have tickets, so we told them, "If you want to hang out for a few minutes and, and see how many people show up, if we have room, we'll let you in." And we were able to let them in, so.
All right.
Yeah, the, the radio stations in the past have always done a summer splash, kind of, um, before school starts, or no, after school's out, um, kind of a free swim day. So, we can handle it the same way. Um, and then Matt can promote it and just work out the details with the involvement from POP and...
I think it's a great idea.
I, I'm fine with February twenty-first.
That's fine with me.
That's great.
Fine.
It wouldn't be as super a swim.
We're lucky we're saying the word "Super Bowl" on the air. It's against NFL, it's copyrighted.
I didn't say "super."
I know, I did. And I know better. The big game.
With this change, I, I was going to be able to be there on February seventh. I will not be able to be there on the twenty-first. I just want to make sure.
Do you have adequate staff?
I hope I will. I, I mean, we're not open on Sundays, so I don't have staff that works on Sundays anymore, but, um, I think they'll...
You feel you have plenty of time to get it put together?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You need a motion on this?
Um, I'm going to take public comment real quick. Is there any public comment? Connie? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hi, Connie McDonald. Um, the one thing that I wanted to add is POP, we haven't confirmed it with all board members, we have to actually make a motion and vote on it too. But POP wants to, um, sponsor a, um, live remote by Coastal Media, so that will promote it. And also the question on how to get the public, you know, able to come in would be covered exactly what you just said. I talked to Renee this morning. So, that's all.
Yeah, any, any marketing that you guys want to do in the newspaper or radio or whatever would be, I'm sure, very beneficial.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, I would entertain a motion to have a free swim day on February twenty-first.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, let me clarify the hours. Are we going to do like a...
POP suggested four hours. I am suggesting that I always have two, two-hour events.
So that more kids can participate? Is that fine with you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, like eleven to twelve, I mean, eleven to one and one to three or...
I think the hours can be a...
One to five? Oh, yeah, because it's a Sunday.
So, it could be a one to three and then a three to five.
Okay. Perfect.
Did I get a motion?
Yes.
Charles? Yep. I second it.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, uh, three to zero. Okay. Please note that Ms. Westfall is not in the room. I didn't see her leave, I apologize. Okay, number eleven, or I'm sorry, number ten. Uh, consider and appoint Blakeen Score Senior to fill a vacant seat on the city's Planning Commission for return ending May two thousand and thirteen. I was, uh, very happy to meet Mr. Inscore, uh, at City Hall the other day. Very nice gentleman, uh, wants to get involved in the community, has some experience previously in the state of Arizona, working on a board of adjustments, which, um, handled appeals within city realms. So, uh, is used to, uh, some good debate, I would assume. And, uh, Ms. Rambo?
Well, you pretty much summed it up for me. Uh, Mr. Inscore is here, um, if you would like to speak with him.
Absolutely.
Um, at this point, um, we are happy to have him aboard, so we would highly recommend that you appoint him tonight.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to say? You can be shy.
You're going to save it all for the Planning Commission meetings?
Any public comment? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Inscore to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's thirded.
Yes. I think that was moved by Charles, seconded by Mr. Burns first. Uh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. Okay. And Ms. Westfall, just so you are aware, we are having the pool anniversary on February twenty-first. Okay. Uh, number eleven, receive the two thousand and nine Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority, uh, report from the executive director, Mr. Renfro. Um, apologize to the council, you did not receive this until this afternoon, actually this evening. So, I know you haven't had a chance to review it, uh, but I believe Mr. Renfro will...
I believe I may have reviewed this already.
Madam Mayor, City Council, um, sorry about that. We had a little miscommunication on giving this to you earlier. Uh, actually, we have a PowerPoint presentation, it's a brief one, but if we can get the slide down, that would be, I mean, the screen down, that would be helpful. Uh, what we have is a copy of the annual report. This is, uh, per the agreement, the, with the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority, we are to generate an annual report and the contents of the report are dictated as part of that agreement. So, um, it's kind of a lengthy document and what I've done is sort of summarized the highlights here in a very brief PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to walk you through.
Keep, hit. One more off. There.
Perfect.
So, uh, this is basically to summarize the activities that happened in the calendar year, calendar year two thousand and nine, the first of which was that I was hired and I'd just celebrated my first anniversary here in Crescent City.
Happy anniversary.
Well, thank you very much.
Have a free swim.
I'm just wondering if that's bottled pool water, actually, but...
Could be.
Um, one of the primary missions of the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority is to make sure that the HAS-199 document is implemented and, um, the projects identified in that document are moved forward. As you all know, the harbor, uh, received in two thousand and nine a considerable amount of money from CDBG and the State Emergency Services Organization, as well as funding to dredge the harbor. All told, that's in the neighborhood of twenty-six to twenty-eight million dollars, which is a substantial infusion into the community. The airport, um, where we are in there, it's the environmental impact report, has been adopted by the Porter Coast Authority. It did receive two appeals, but those are being worked on collaboratively, so we're hoping to, to get those appeals resolved in the short term, um, that will allow the terminal expansion to go forward. Additionally, at the airport, there are other projects out there such as the fencing and the runway safety areas that were initiated in two thousand and nine. Completion of those projects will make the airport much more desirable to attract additional carriers to our airport. So, that's, that's moving along nicely. The sewer, um, as we have had numerous discussions on, is also moving along nicely. Again, people underestimate the complexity of that project, um, the fact that it is heavily overseen by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the State Water Resource Control Board. And they too apparently are quite pleased with the progress at, of the wastewater treatment plants, actually not a sewer. And that will be a cornerstone for economic development within our community. So, we are very pleased that that is, uh, coming to a, a rapid completion. Highway one ninety-nine, we have funds, um, committed for addressing the curves on the highway that prevent the Surface Transportation Act, the large tractor trailers from getting to our community. Once those issues are resolved, we will be able to get larger trucks in here, which will reduce the cost of goods in the community. And then lastly, the dot com, which is a broadband, we are working with, uh, Southern Coast Hospital and Charter to perhaps finally complete the redundancy loop on that. And the Yurok Tribe have also received broadband money in two thousand and nine, so that is also moving along. Completion of redundancy for the broadband system will also allow recruitment of high-tech industry into our community. Uh, another accomplishment in two thousand and nine was the completion of an inventory of, uh, commercial properties in the county. And I'm working with Ms. Rambo to integrate this with the city so that when we do have people that contact us asking for a three to five acre parcel with sewer, with water, with power, whatever, we can quickly sort through this and tell them which properties are available in the community. This is a very powerful recruiting effort for bringing new businesses into the community. We did establish the microenterprise loan program. Uh, this is under the, the auspices of the county, but it's been most successful with, um, some of the new businesses in the community. Uh, we entered into an agreement with the North Coast Small Business Development Center to provide technical assistance to entrepreneurs and people that are wishing to start their new businesses. To date, we funded three microenterprise loans that have created two brand-new businesses, one in the city. Uh, that's a total of two and a half new jobs created and three existing jobs that were retained with these monies. Uh, we do have our first, or it's my understanding, at least in a long time, this is the first time the Tri-Agency's actually had its own office, so we've set that up now. We have a website out there, which, uh, we get periodic updates on that. We did have the, um, tourist center this summer for ten weeks. We had thirty-two hundred visitors and we estimate that that brought in about eighty thousand dollars into the community. We've worked with the city and the Harbor District and the Albert Seafood to sort of broker a deal to finally elect them, get their wastewater treatment issue settled. And hopefully that'll allow us to recruit another seafood processor into the community. And then lastly, I'm working on business development plans for the harbor in conjunction with their master plan. Uh, we've put together a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for Hambro Forest Products for removing woody debris from the woods and, and having a more beneficial use for it. I assisted in the seven million dollar Connect Oregon Three grant application for the airport. This would allow us to get some funding for the terminal expansion out there. We actually have a written work plan for what Tri-Agency plans to accomplish in the, over, from a year to year, and there are measurable goals in there. And then lastly, I've been out and sort of going around being a cheerleader for the community, saying what wonderful things we have on the horizon. And speaking of that, we're trying to, uh, bring in three new, new events into the community, working with the city. Uh, the first is a small, uh, business and career development fair. Uh, we don't have a date for that, but it's looking like sometime in, in April or May. We tried to put together the Shop and Dine Del Norte program before the holidays, but it was too short of a fuse. And this is basically to stop retail leakage into Oregon and other communities, but we plan to do that for this coming holiday season. And then last but not least, we're hoping to bring, we're not hoping, we are going to bring back the Crab Wine and Cheese Festival. Uh, so these are sort of the details on that event, which you can look at. But, um, to date, we've had very good... We will bring back, or actually, we're going to work with staff to have them put together an official request for the city to sponsor this event, and perhaps bring that up at the February 1st council meeting. I think, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just for the council to be thinking about any questions, concerns that you have about that, basically, we're trying to create a mechanism through which Bill and Michelle and the others that are working on this project can accept sponsorships, expend money, make sure that they've got their facility lined up, which will be the cultural center. The guy that we sometimes jokingly call Debbie Downer, Ken McDonald, our finance director, is concerned about making sure that we follow, which is good, that's why we need a finance director, because the city manager's, you know, his, the typical city manager desire is to please everyone, say yes to everyone, and maybe push the envelope on the rules a little bit, so it's good to have a finance director that's holding us accountable to the rules, but.
Is that the new title?
Yeah, Debbie Downer.
Debbie Downer.
I called him Dr. Death before, now he's Debbie.
And I'm learning more and more about our city manager. The other day I was at City Hall, and he's like, "Yeah, Sister Rambo."
Yeah.
And now it's Debbie Downer, he's got like little nicknames for everybody.
Yeah, I do like to. So, yeah, Ken, this is primarily, we would feel more comfortable with accepting money and spending money for this event, and it will be, the commitment we have from Mr. Renfro is it will be revenue neutral, in other words, there, the city will not be on the hook for any of this money. He's going to collect revenue in that will then be spent out for the event, and Tri-Agency said this afternoon, will cover any loss that there may be, because there's a little bit of speculation in all this, it's the first time in a long time that we've had this event, but he's making that commitment, that he will, Tri-Agency will bankroll.
Mr. Butler took my credit card this afternoon, just to make sure.
Yeah, well, Mr. Slert and I sit on the Tri-Agency Board of Directors, and I think it will be up to the Board of Directors to decide if we're going to sponsor a loss.
It won't be a loss.
So, anyway, that's.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions on how the financial part would work, because I know that you, I don't know, I'd like to have a better understanding on how public funds intermingling with a different group, and how that works for a public event, and where the proceeds are going, and I'd like to see a, maybe a small business kind of plan with a budget, and how all that's going to work.
We have all that information available, we didn't bring it this evening, but it'll be at the February 1st meeting.
Great.
And we do have the support of the local business improvement district on this as well. A couple of interesting things there, one, we're going to have a crab dish trophy, a seafood chowder trophy, and a clam chowder trophy, and we're hoping that these will be marketing business development benefits to the restaurants that win those, because they'll be able to have the best clam chowder in Crescent City, which should be something they can sell. It should be fun time, and it's open to the public, it's a family event, and.
Bill, why isn't this being processed kind of through the Chamber of Commerce?
The primary reason there is I didn't know the Chamber ever did it in the past. Again, this was intended to be a city event, City of Crescent City, that's, yeah. And I personally thought that if the Chamber was interested in doing this in the past five or six or eight years, whenever they quit, they would have picked the ball up. So it was coordinated between Tri-Agency and the city, but the Chamber's, has been aware of it, and as has the BID. I've offered to hand it to them, and they said.
I'm just, my just concern is, you know, governmental, public funds, and then nonprofit would normally be the entity that you would work out of for an event that's going to raise money.
The money is raised to make it a revenue-neutral event, there's no, anything that's quote-unquote "left over" will be part of the prize money. There's going to be, well, I have to go into detail, there's a single crab race this year, we're not going to race crabs all day, the winner of that event, first, the first, second, and third prizes in that event will be donations from the excess money to the Marine Mammal Center, the animal shelter, and the cat shelter. So there is no leftover money, it's not a fundraising event. We do want to sell sponsorships to cover costs like the rental of the facility, security, setup, cleanup, trash disposal, that sort of thing. The city's not going to be on the hook for any sale of anything, the food will be provided by outside persons that will then sell that food there. So again, we hope this is a, well, the plan is, it's a revenue-neutral event, there is no excess money, there's no deficit. And to date, we have three, three entities that are willing to sponsor it, the question was, who do they write the check to, and that's what we've been trying to work out with the city, but we'll get there. And it's not unusual for communities to sponsor.
Did you need to know how to spell my last name? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I asked him just to sign it, and that you would fill it in.
All right.
And then lastly, what we have here, and this is something I'm pretty, personally very excited about, is the timeline, these projects have been years, and in some cases decades, in the making, and what I've done here is try to put this down, so you can see there's an end point to these things, and we have very exciting times ahead of us. The harbor stuff should be done by the middle of 2012, that's based on their projections, their engineers' projections, the wastewater treatment plant should be totally up and running by the middle of next year, or this year. The terminal, just a couple of three years out, that's kind of fuzzy, depending on the appeals. The highways, projects, those go out for quite a few years because of the environmental work that still needs to be done on them. The broadband internet line, that line could come in substantially, depending on how the discussions go with Sutter Coast Hospital and Charter. And then lastly, the Elk Valley Rancheria's Destination Resort, which is, has the potential to be a huge benefit economically to our community, that has started to start to move, and there's an end point out there, and that could come in depending on their plans, but, so where we go in the future, that's what the crystal ball is, and we're not really sure, but it's all very positive, and it's very exciting. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Renfro?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, having to do with sewer and the harbor, Albor Seafood. I think, I feel like I missed a couple beats here, I didn't know that an agreement was in place to have Albor Seafood put their waste through the wastewater treatment plant. Is that agreement finalized?
There is no, no, there is no agreement, there's a discussion and a discourse going on, which is a huge step forward from where it's been.
Okay, and just for clarification purposes, I remember Jody Mangum talking on various occasions that crab waste through our system would clog it up and create problems, is that still an issue?
No, if, I've spent quite a bit of time over the plant, the way they process the food is much, the seafood is much different from the past. I was able to look at approximately a week's worth of solids that were removed through the current solid screening process, and if this were a box, it would fill about half of this box, it's not very much. And they're very, they're actually fairly small pieces. They have to go, what Albor's has done is at the plant, they've essentially installed screens, so that the material is pre-screened before it goes to the harbor's screen.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel?
No, great report, Mr. Renfro, you made a great job, you're, you've got all cylinders running, and especially like the Crab Wine &amp; Cheese event, I mean, it seems to be celebration of local Crescent City at our desk, so that's a very good thing.
Just for the public's knowledge, the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority is a joint powers authority that is governed by the city, the county, and the harbor, and Bill is, is the paid executive director, and his priority and job is to create economic development, an atmosphere for economic development in our community, and that's the only way that we're going to see progress, create jobs, and as I always like to remind people, economic development means better households, and when we have better households, we have better families, and we have a better and safer community, so thank you for your continued efforts, and I know that this is a preface to and ask for the city to continue to be a partner with the Tri-Agency, and as I've mentioned before, we will consider that during our budget process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the Tri-Agency report? Ms. Mangum?
Jody Mangum, City of Crescent City, so it sounds like, as it's been all along, the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate future growth, so I guess we'll just be watching how many people get a chance to hook up to this, and we've already started with the harbor, and if it only fills up a box this big, they can't handle their waste, and I'd also like to know, I understand, I guess, that after they pre-filtered the waste from Albor Seafood, it was going into our outfall, and if the City of Crescent City ever received fines based on the waste coming from Albor Seafood, thank you.
Albor Seafood has never been a customer of the city, so we have not received any fines.
The question was, if they were putting their waste into our outfall, were we receiving fines from the state based on Albor Seafood's waste?
They have never put any of their waste into our outfall.
Okay, when they were just starting the preliminaries for the wastewater treatment plant, I'm pretty sure I can show you documentation that it was going into our outfall, unless it was just dumping in, straight into the harbor, is that right?
Yeah, they have their own outfall.
They have their own? And they've never?
No, it's not their own outfall, but.
The new outfall? The maximum capacity outfall?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The harbor has their own permit, and that permit has allowed them to use the outfall. They've, they've continued to use the outfall that the city has installed, and so they have their own permit, it goes out the outfall, and they checked their effluent before it goes into their lines, which eventually goes through our outfall.
Right, okay.
If they have any fines, it would be from their effluent before it ever goes into our outfall.
Right, and the fines are, currently, they go to the harbor, not the City of Crescent City?
If they have any fines, it would be their own, from their own effluent before it goes into their pipes, before it goes into our outfall.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Point of clarification there, if you can, if you can vision a why, that's the system we have today, where you have two legs that come into it, and then a single outfall that goes in the ocean, and as Mr. Barnes pointed out, the harbor's permitted under their own National Pluton Discharge Elimination System permit, as to what they can put out that line, so they do share a common outfall with the city.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on to number 12, consider and approve an MOU to establish the North Coast Local Agency Coastal Coordination Committee. Mr. Butler?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, tonight, we're bringing back to you an item that you considered in an earlier forum back in the fall, and this is a proposed memorandum of agreement that would establish a new cooperative agency, the North Coast Local Agency Coastal Coordination Committee. It was a cooperative effort that was launched by several agencies, primarily the Humboldt Vega Harbor Recreation and Conservation District, and it would include Del Norte County, the City of Crescent City, Humboldt County, Mendocino County, and then several cities and agencies within each of those three counties. And the primary idea would be to create a forum where agencies from all three of those counties can work cooperatively on issues that affect all three counties, particularly coastal resource issues. So you're talking about anything from the Marine Life Protection Act initiative to regional coastal sediment management, ocean energy, the marine highway concept, coordination of ocean observing systems, and a variety of other issues that may come up. There really is not currently a tri-county cooperative agency like this that would allow that kind of cooperation, so the council, when you first considered it, you supported, I think it was on a 401 vote at that time, the person who voted against it was Councilwoman Murray, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I did have a conversation with her recently, they indicated her concerns have been largely resolved, and the, what happened after your, your council, this council, and other bodies commented on the early draft is, they went back, made some corrections and updates to it, and then created this final version that's before you tonight. So we are recommending a staff that you approve the request for the City of Crescent City to join the North Coast Local Agency Coastal Coordination Committee, and that you authorize me to complete and execute the memorandum of agreement, also that you designate at least one member of the city council, you can pick more if you want, but at least one member of the council, and then me as the city manager to serve as agency representatives for the City of Crescent City. That concludes my staff report, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Great, well, I'd just like to point out that Catherine and I both attended the local MLPA joint kind of pre-meeting before their staff meeting, which was held at the harbor this last week, and the, it was, it was just, it was nice to be in a room full of people that could communicate, where, you know, everyone was from all walks of life, fishermen, you know, city council people, scientists, biologists, environmentalists, and the one thing that I took away from that meeting was that the people from the, the outside of the area were saying that it was, it was Del Norte County that this whole MPA process is really looking at, because we've been the most successful, because we've been working together as a, as a joint, you know, front, showing that we have concerns, and that we want this, this process to move forward based on facts and science and, you know, actual surveys, so I think being a part of this effort to look at all issues that affect us and our neighbors along the coast is, is the most efficient way for us to participate. Any other comments, if not, I'll take a public comment? Is there a public comment on this?
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back, and if I could get a motion to approve as dictated by Mr. Butler, and also is there anyone that would like to be appointed to serve with Mr. Butler?
I don't know, I think that ought to be up to the mayor, if you want to appoint someone, but I would approve that we approve the North Coast Local Agency Coastal Coordinating Committee, MOU, and have Rod sign it, and then have the mayor go ahead and appoint another representative.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, do I need to appoint someone tonight? Can we, can you and I have that discussion? I'm not, I'd like to see what Catherine's interest is before I, if there is none, of course, I will appoint myself.
Sure, you can get that at a later time.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number 13. We have a legal agreement, or a contract with, for legal services for an outside attorney firm, McDonough, Holland, and Allen, and we just haven't, we haven't visited that for a while, so Mr. Butler is bringing that to our attention.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, this actually is back in the fall of 2007, when the council retained the services of Bob Black to be your, your lead city attorney. Right around that same time, October of 2007, the city entered into a supplemental services agreement, legal services agreement with the Sacramento-based law firm, McDonough, Holland, and Allen. We haven't made extensive use of them over the past two years, but we have used them in some key situations, just a few examples, they are now our redevelopment law expert, and I mentioned earlier this evening that we're moving forward on really getting our redevelopment agency and activities back up and running, and have had some key conversations and staff work, legal staff work already done by Iris Yang, who will be our redevelopment specialist with, I'm going to say MHA to avoid the long three-name firm name, but she's the lead. the lead redevelopment staff attorney with MHA, and I've been very pleased with her so far in our dealings. We have used MHA's water law, water rights law expert over the last year fairly extensively to help us with our place of use and time extension issues with the state water resources control, or Department of Water Resources, and have found Mark Atlas, who is their water rights guru, to be very helpful to us in that whole process. And then, of course, Harriet Steiner, whose name you've probably heard, because she's kind of our general all-purpose municipal law specialist, has been helpful to us on several issues over the last couple of years. And of course, it's good for us to have a backup law firm for at least two reasons. One is being in kind of a smaller town or isolated part of California like Crescent City is, we don't always have attorneys here that are specialists in every type of municipal law. And a larger firm in an urban area like MHA, they do have, they're a large firm, they have specialists in some of these key areas that we occasionally need expertise in. Also, with Bob Black being our lead city attorney, Bob has a number of local clients, other governmental agencies, where there are sometimes situations where he feels there may be a conflict or a perception of a conflict. In that case, it's important for us to have a backup firm to go to if Bob chooses to recuse himself from involvement in a particular issue.
Right. As an example, when we started having discussions with the harbor about annexation, Bob also represents the harbor. Bob chose, Bob will continue to represent the harbor and, in our best interest, recommended that we seek outside counsel so that we could get the best advice that we could get on annexation. So, that's just one example where we've used our outside counsel.
That's right. So, we have come forward, just because it's been a couple of years since we've updated the agreement with MHA, we want to continue that relationship. And we feel like it continues to be of value, that we're getting good service from them. We do try to keep their use to a minimum because they are more expensive on an hourly basis than Mr. Black and Martha Rice. But there have been times where we've needed to call on them, and would like to continue that current arrangement where we have MHA as a backup firm, and Bob Black and Martha Rice continue to serve as the primary firm. And of course, you took action to extend that agreement with Mr. Black at your last meeting. So, we're recommending this evening that you approve the amended agreement for legal services between the City of Crescent City and McDonough, Holland, and Allen Professional Corporation as presented.
Great, thank you. Any questions, council? Mr. Slert?
I do have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if we should possibly consider requesting estimates for services to be proposed on a particular case or matter? It's not uncommon in architecture and engineering professions where you give a proposal of what you think the scopes of work is going to involve and represent dollar-wise, so we have some order of magnitude?
Do you mean, for instance, if we were going to proceed with the annexation discussion before seeking their advice, we would ask them for a proposal?
Or ask them just an order of magnitude of what they think their services would constitute from a cost standpoint to the city? So, we have some ballpark idea where we're going.
I think Mr. Butler does that very ballpark-ish, because he has to, he only has a certain allowance that we give him to enter into agreements. And if it's above that, he has to bring that back to us. And he also has to put forward a purchase order agreement for any services.
That's actually a good idea that we'll continue to implement, especially if we know that there's a large project that is going to involve multiple hours over a period of time.
Yeah. Following on Charles Coate's, I really like that idea. This agreement doesn't make it exclusive to this firm. We're able to go out to any firm as need arises, correct?
That's true.
Yeah, it's just, they would be the first choice.
An example of that would be when we've had the Prop 218 questions, we have chosen in the past to go with Mr. Colentuno because of his expertise in that area. So, yeah, that, this would not stop us from choosing a third firm if we needed a particular type of expertise.
I'm very happy with the contract.
Yeah, they've provided excellent service thus far. Any public comment? Seeing none, I would consider a motion to approve the amended agreement.
I would approve a motion to amend the agreement for legal services between the City of Crescent City and McDonough, Holland, and Allen, PC.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I need a polled vote for this?
I'd prefer, since it's an agreement, that we get that on the record.
And Madam Mayor, who was the second?
Mr. Burns.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Schlong?
Yes, thank you. Number 14, receive an update regarding the lighting on our Highway 101 welcome signs. Mr. Burns. And I just have to, I have to say this, I'm missing my son's basketball game, but I'm getting, I just got an update. He said I had to announce it because I'm not there. He stole the ball, he took it to the other end, and he scored.
All right.
He'll be watching on Saturday.
Well, we'll try to make this fast. The, we, the entry signs at the south side of town, the welcome signs, as you know, is a little nicer sign than the sign on the north side of town, in that it's larger, it has landscaping around the sign, it has some lights that shine up on the sign. And kind of a nice sign as you come into town, well, the one on the north side of town, simply it's a smaller sign, it's in the area that's hardscaped, you only have ambient lighting from the street signs. And so, I guess the question we face is, what, do we want to just deal with the sign at the north side of town? Do we want to put lights on that sign? Do we want to talk to Caltrans about redoing both signs, the sign at the north side of town? Do we want to look at maybe doing pedestal signs where we actually have signs that go from the ground all the way up instead of just having a couple of posts with the, you know, I mean, that's a pretty outdated way of having entry signs into a city. And what do we want to do? We could, I suggested putting lights on the north side of town would cost about $10,000. Do we want to landscape that whole area? Do we want to consider landscaping that area? Do we want to, do you guys want to have a committee that looks into redoing? How do you want to go from here?
Well, I think that, you know, since Ms. Westfall, in her first few months on the council, recommended that we paint them, they look a lot better. But I do think that something that really stands out would sure be nice, that's definitely lit up. And in that process, I'd like the Shoreline RV Park to have a sign.
Yeah, that's another thing that needs to be done.
I would really like to see that north end redone completely over, as much as the painting fixed something so the sign's a little more attractive. I'm in charge of the landscaping cleanup because of Adopt a Highway. And since I injured my knee, I haven't been able to get out there with crew and other things. So, my, my thoughts on lighting a sign would be, first, can we do something with solar? Second, can we use something with LEDs? So, I definitely would like to see a sign lit up. I don't know if seven to 10,000 is, I don't know how that budget would come into play, but if there's a way to use LEDs or solar with maybe a spotlight shining down, I'd certainly like to have somebody look at that.
Well, we certainly can do something with solar, and it'd be less money. But...
Could we do something that's more representative of the city? You know, maybe some river rock, or maybe the outline of the lighthouse as the sign?
That's what I mean. You could do something much, much nicer for a sign. That's really the issue. And we could maybe take out the hardscape, that whole entry area does not look very nice. And then, if you introduce solar, then you have a bunch of these panels sitting there. You know, it just, that doesn't look very nice either. So, I kind of dismissed that, just because having a bunch of solar panels next to your sign doesn't look very nice either. And then, your, your lights coming up doesn't look nice either. I like when you have lights, to have them concreted, flush, so you don't see lights sitting there shining up and solar panels sitting alongside of them.
Okay, but don't we have two lights over at the south end right now in concrete? And one's been broken for a couple of years?
They haven't been broken for a couple of years. But all I'm saying is, if what you have is they're flush, you can't see them.
Right.
And they shine up from the ground, nobody can see them. And, and what I'm suggesting is that if you have a sign, that if you can redo signs that aren't just posts with a board across with your city, and you can redo a sign in rock, that an architect designs...
Maybe with backlight, with lighting within the sign?
Within the sign. I mean, signs that are designed, I'm not that kind of a person, I'm an engineer. I don't design things that are attractive to look at. You know, that's not what I do. You get people that do that.
So, I'm appointing Mr. Slert.
Yeah. And then, we, we take the hardscape out of that area, we landscape the area, so that when you come into town, it looks nice.
Yeah.
And, and we take that $10,000 and we make it $20,000, and we, when you come into town, it, you have something.
I would like to see this budgeted, though. I don't really think...
Yeah, it needs to be.
Yeah.
I would like to see it budgeted, and I'm in favor of doing that. I think we ought to put a nice wind turbine up to generate these puppies and make it part of it. Yeah, fine.
So, are you interested?
Very interested.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is appoint Mr. Slert to work with Public Works on coming up with something that would be attractive for the council to take a look at. Then you guys can come up with a budget and present it to a Surrin Budget Workshop.
A wind generator there on each one to be the lighthouse.
Limited to three.
Light, you know, and we, we could not have it...
There you go.
Reflecting, shining, never...
Jim, thank you for bringing this forward. I appreciate it. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
But all kidding aside, I think it's a great idea.
I do, too.
To make it look very attractive on both ends.
It's the gateway to our...
Yeah, Mr. Slert ran on that platform, you know, we need a gateway to our community. And he has designed some beautiful things, so I'd love to see what he comes up with. Okay. And then, moving on to 16, review and adopt revised travel and expense policy.
No, you missed 15. Aren't we doing 15?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Receive update and approve, recommended appropriations for improvements to the spa at the Fred End Municipal Pool. Mr. Burns?
One of the problems of stabilizing a small body of water and, is that, especially when you get a lot of people in it, is it, we've had problems with the pH and the, it's just, it's, it's hard to keep it stable. And one of the issues is the CO2 and, and the small amount of CO2, the size of the bottles, it only lasts for a couple of days, and they've had trouble changing the bottles. So, we're recommending, as you see in the staff report, that we get bigger containers for the CO2, get different controllers, because these controllers are hard for the, the people at the pool to work with. And the bigger bottles will, instead of lasting two days, will last for about a month. And then, we actually have to have our maintenance guys come in and change these bottles, they're big bottles. And the bottles that last for a month, the distributors come in and actually don't have to change the bottles, they just fill them up. And these controllers...
Yeah, so you just pump it in.
Yeah, you just pump it in.
It's a permanent bottle.
Yeah, it's a tank. So, the whole fix for these controllers, the new tanks, is about $16,000, and Pop is going to contribute a little over $7,000 of that. So, we think this will keep the spa running in almost continually, so...
Yeah. My question is, why in the design of this was the CO2 not addressed?
Did I...
I mean, what, I guess, I mean, if this is a pool contractor...
Well, I would say that if you'd had, I suppose, if you'd had, instead, if you'd had regular pool guys designing it, instead of having your Public Works guys doing it, you might have, I don't know. Probably...
I'm talking about the pool contractor that we hired. Try whatever they were called.
Tricon.
Yeah, I suppose, I don't know why Tricon, maybe they should have told us. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Probably they should have known.
How much were they paid for the design?
It, see...
It wasn't really a design, it was just more of a model.
See, we, the design of the pool was originally done quite a while ago, long before we ever got here, and it, and then it was changed, and I don't know who did it originally. And so, we took those designs and we revised them a little bit, and then we hired a guy to do the job. And so, anyway, I don't think any of that matters at this point. We are where we are. And so, we have these tanks that we have to switch out, and we have to switch them every couple of days.
Right. I know. We need to solve the problem because people are paying to use the spa, and then they get inside the pool and they can't use the spa, so... And we're very lucky that we have promoter pool foundation that's, you know, continues to do their fundraising and is, is willing to pay for almost half of this. So, thank you again. And any other questions?
Do we have any kind of usage we get in the therapy pool?
Not very much lately.
Sorry. That's hard to say because we're, we have to close it so often. But the, the desire to use it is there. I'm trying to come up with an educated guess. I would say 15 to 20 people a day would like to be using it.
So, substantially used?
Yes.
Well, and the, the part that I feel bad about is people have bought passes that include the use of all three facilities, the pool, the spa, and the...
Sauna.
Sauna. And yet, they're not able to use it on a regular basis, so...
And, and we are addressing that for, you know, each of those people, but it would be better if we didn't have to.
Right, exactly. Okay, is there any public comment?
Hi, you're welcome, thank you. I'm Bob Stankis, I'm a retired physician, practiced obstetric gynecology for a number of years in Stockton, so I talk to women a lot. I've talked to a lot of people in the pool. I use the pool, especially the spa for myself. I have two artificial knees, one artificial hip, and a bad, no, shoulder joint. Anyway, I, I think you should look into the design of this. They recall cars for faulty designs. This looks like a faulty design to me, I think. Now, it may not be worth it to do it, but that's my point. Other point is, I think this should be done. People use this pool, I use this pool, you people in the future will use this pool and the spa to help yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mangum?
This is Jody Mangum, Crescent City. Did you guys see how much it costs? How much is this thing? Did I miss it?
Yeah, $16,000. And Pop will pay for half, almost half of that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Any other public comment?
Richard Denehy, from Crescent City, I'm on the POP committee. I was on the city council when we approved the pool. And as I recall, we were trying to reach, stay within budget with the grant that we received and the fundraising that POP did for us, and our city money. And so, we didn't hire an architect to do the pool. That was a thought, we were just gonna fix the pool, then as an afterthought, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, as an afterthought, we said, well, why can't we get a little spa in there? We had room, along with the sauna. So, we didn't have a design company come in and do that, who we could hold responsible. We did, the city did it itself, we're not, they're not experts in doing it, and sometimes that's what goes on.
The actual engineer designs for the remodel that was done previously were, basically what the architect said was, well, I designed that so long ago, you know, I'm not going to change anything on that, I believe is what the case was, unless we want to go back and have him redesign it. And so, yeah, we just kind of move forward.
Took years and years before we could raise the money to go with the pool. So, this cost is relatively minor than what it would have cost to have a designer design it, the tanks. And that's the way I look at it, and it's, uh, and it's good of POP to raise the money, our committee to raise that money to help with the city, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council.
For me, it doesn't make sense to have the investment in the whole pool facility and to not have that component working. I think it's an important component. Uh, I appreciate the participation or partnership on the part of POP. And I think we need to fix it, uh, for the long term.
Is that a motion?
That's, that's a motion.
Second.
All the, uh, could you-
I'm assuming you're approving the $16,000 amount?
Yes.
Which, a portion that will be paid for by POP?
Yes.
Yes. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalom?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, review and adopt a revised travel and expense policy. Uh, some IRS changes have been made, so we need to update our travel policy. Uh, so, uh, Mr. McDonald? Or shall I call you?
I like the Debbie part.
Debbie Downer?
I'm fine with Dr. Depp. What happened was-
Doctor Depp?
Depp.
Oh, I like the Dr. Depp.
Sorry. Doctor Non-Depp in that, in that regard. The IRS had passed new mileage rates for, um, the 2010 year. And what we had, the, the main, the main change in this is just changing the mileage rate. If you look in behind the proposed policies, the one that we started with, um, so we're just looking through it for any, any sections that we can pare it down, because it is pretty lengthy and not, um, not real easy to understand for some people. But we tried to set that up in there, get everything that the IRS wants, but the main issue is the mileage. We had set up a policy, if you use a personal car, you took the lesser of the full mileage amount that the IRS allowed. Previous year, it was 55 cents a mile for the full business use rate, and it was 24 cents a mile for medical and mileage. Well, they've now dropped it down to 50 cents a mile for the full business use rate, and dropped the medical moving rate down to 16 cents a mile. And looking at that, and looking at the average type car that does 19 or 20 miles to the gallon, it barely covers the gas cost. So, I thought that was a little bit unfair. And the only, this is the only place I've ever come across that does this type of process. And I think it was set up to try and encourage through financial disincentives to use the municipal cars, and rather, the pool cars, rather than, than your own personal cars.
Which I support.
I do too, from a, a, a personal financial perspective, but also by the same token, I have four-wheel drive vehicles. And so, when I go out of town on a trip, going through Grants Pass and I-5 that way, I much personally would rather take my own car, rather than a two-wheel drive car, and have to deal with putting on chains and dealing with that if those issues ever came up. But, we do have means of, of avoiding that, you know, if you go south on 101 all the way down to Lake County and Highway 20. But that's really the only, the only, um, main change that was in there. There's gonna be some other ones that were just taking out some paragraphs that were maybe redundant. When I look back in the past, like five, 10 years ago, we had one policy for travel expenses for council and another one for employees. This one is trying to blend them together, so sometimes there's some things that may apply to council and not necessarily staff. And so, we've tried to identify most of those. I still think that we'll be revising this more. The, the simplest one I've ever had in other cities, I mean, that was a one pager, most of the time it was one to two pages.
So, is, is a city allowed to just adopt its own policy as long as it meets the standard of the IRS?
Right, like if we decided we were gonna pay a dollar a mile-
Could we pay 25 cents per mile instead of 16?
The only, the only problem is exceeding the full rate. If, if we go over 50 cents a mile, the IRS is gonna consider, say if you do a dollar a mile, they're gonna say 50 cents is non-taxable, the other 50 cents is taxable income. And that, that's the only difference.
Right, I, I personally think 50 cents is quite high. To use your own personal.
The IRS, um, figures that rate out based on the cost of gas, upkeep of the vehicle, ownership of the vehicle, and insurance of the vehicle. So, it'd be the same type of thing if you were renting a car, there's been some individuals that have rented cars to take on trips. Their, their own, you know, they're paying for the rental on their own, and the mileage amount goes to compensate them for that. But we do have, um, I think, one, two, maybe even three pool cars available, so they are there. They're not being used very much, so I think a discussion Rod and I had is that maybe we don't need to keep such a large stock of pool cars if they're not being used.
But it's more, um, it's better off for the city to have our employees use those cars. So, personally, I think that unless you're going somewhere where there's snow and you need to use a four-wheel drive, if you're gonna use, if you're, if you're gonna travel, let's say you're going to Eureka for a meeting, and a pool car is available. When we say pool car, it doesn't mean Fred Ender pool car, it means it's part of our-
Municipal staff.
Municipal staff of pool, of cars. Um, then you should use that. And if you choose not to, you shouldn't be paid the 50 cents, you should be paid the 16 or the 25 or whatever we decide.
Yeah, and that, and that was how the policy was before. And what we found, it was real difficult in order to verify if somebody's taking their own car, if a pool car's not available, then they got the full rate. So, there was this difference, and it administratively, it made a lot of hassle for not a lot of real savings in money. So, it was more, because of the old policy, we had to verify whether a pool car was available. If one was available, then they had to take the reduced rate. If all the pool cars were taken when somebody needed to go out of town, then they were allowed to get the full rate. So, that, that section, if you look at the back part that had the old one, is now taken out and it just has-
I understand the concept, but I, when I sign the check, and let's say it's a four-hour trip, and we're paying four hours one way, so an eight-hour trip, round trip, and we're paying 275 bucks just for gas, when the actual cost of the gas is probably 100. I'm looking at that and weighing, gosh, that's kind of-
But I think you're, but I think it's more than gas if you take your own car, it is more than gas.
If you don't have to pay your-
Well, if you don't have to, that's, that's a different issue, if you don't have to take your own car.
But if, I agree, if you're traveling somewhere where there's snow and you have to chain up-
The issue too, if, if any non-travelers go with you, non-city official travelers go with you, are, we don't want to cover that additional risk. So, when somebody takes their personal vehicle, their personal insurance will cover that. So, like if, um, if you were going on a trip and taking a spouse with you, you, you would not be able to take, um, a pool, a municipal vehicle with you, because we being self-insured would then insure the official driver, the city employee, and the other person. So, if there was an accident, the city would end up having to pay out on two people's behalf, rather than just the official traveler's behalf. And so, that, that was another reason too. Because I know we've had a lot of trips, in the two years I've been here, some people went to the Bay Area for some training for even extended periods of time. And if their wife was allowed, or kids were allowed to go, they could travel with them and go. If they had to take a municipal car, then it would go that way. We also have the fact, if you fly, you know, there's, there's that issue too. If you fly out of, out of the area and then rent a car when you're there, or take public transportation, that cost is still probably gonna be greater. You know, you can have that as a ceiling too. I've seen that in places where you're gonna take the cheapest mode of travel, whether it be driving, flying, or whatever.
Anything else from the council?
Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing none, close public comment, bring it back to the council.
I would moan to approve the revised travel policy by resolution with the attached forms, uh, to be effective immediately. Uh, and I think, uh, maybe we could add the caveat that, uh, the mayor has proposed, I think, uh, to have an incentive to use the pool cars as available.
Second.
Can you explain to me what you mean by an incentive?
I guess the incentive would be based on the amount that would be reimbursed, uh, using your personal vehicle would be less. So that the incentive would be to use the pool car as it's available.
That would change the, that would change the policy.
Yeah, it would.
I can definitely, just from a management practice standpoint, start reviewing those requests more carefully and leaning on folks to use the pool cars where it's appropriate. That might be one way to address the, the concern.
Okay.
By the way, you made a motion to adopt this-
Yes.
-policy.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Uh, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalom?
No, thank you. Moving on to item number 17, select dates and a time for our 2010 Town Hall meeting and our 2000, 2009, 2010 mid-year budget review.
Yes, Mayor-
Mr. Butler.
Now that we're into the new year, we wanted to have you get your calendars ready and start identifying some dates that you would be available for two important upcoming events. The mayor has indicated that she wants to do a 2010 Town Hall meeting during the, sometime during the first quarter of this new year. Uh, this one will focus on a couple of the, two or three maybe of the specific projects that came out of the 2009 Town Hall. And actually, I'm not even sure the mayor knows this yet, but Mr. Slert and Mr. Barnes have been doing some discussion about something that I think will work very well, right in line with what the mayor had proposed, and actually doing some visioning and planning and discussion of beachfront park master planning, front street design, which is one of those two, one of the two projects we talked about, coming out of the, the Town Hall from last year. And then also, not focusing just on the future of tsunami landing, but the downtown area as a whole, because really tsunami landing, it's hard to really talk about that without talking about the bigger vision of what, what's gonna happen with the downtown, and what's it gonna look like. So, they've been, uh, you know, developing some ideas that I think will fit in well to what we had talked about. And we wanted to probably do another Saturday morning, two to three hours. We were looking at either the last Saturday of February, which would be the 27th, or one of the first two Saturdays in March, and those would fall on March 6th and March 13th. And probably if we stuck with the pattern from last year, we'd be looking at maybe a start time of 9:30, being wrapped up by noon.
Uh, March 6th is JC Tournament Weekend?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, not a good time.
What's the next date?
March 13th, I'm out of town, sorry. Um, February 27th would work for me, or we could move it to, I'm thinking, if we're gonna start talking about tsunami landing in downtown, that having a better understanding of what's happening with our redevelopment agency, uh, might be a good foundation to foster that discussion.
Sure.
Do you have any kind of a timeline on?
Yeah, we could, that would probably be early March realistically, to get that presented to you.
I would prefer March. Hold on, I'm looking at my schedule here.
That only leaves the 20th.
Yeah, 20th to the 27th.
27th is the summer, don't worry about that.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, March 20th would work for me, so.
That's fine.
That's fine.
And the location?
And we could, we can tentatively set it for March 20th, and then we can do a little reconnaissance on anything else that may be floating out there that would be a conflict.
Sure. Location, Ms. Westfall, would most likely be the, uh, Washington Street Fire Hall, like we did last time.
Um, very happy to hear that you're working with Jim on that design. I've actually seen some of Charles' preliminary work, and I just want to give him kudos every time I can, because he does all this free for the city, just because he loves our community. And he's done a beautiful design of what front street could look like. Um, and I, and I love it. I mean, there's maybe a few small things that could be changed, but based on just some of the, you know, feedback we've gotten. But I would love to have the community involved in that discussion. Our Town Hall meeting that we had last year was incredible, incredibly successful. We had about 50 community members show up and really made it meaningful. And we broke out into groups and really came up with ideas and goals. And our staff has taken those goals and made them their own, and they're responding to the community's wants and desires, and that's what we're here for. That's what I feel is, is true progress, so, um, I'm excited to do that again. And, um, I know one of the things that was really important that came out of the last Town Hall meeting was, uh, the community made it very clear that tourism was important, and this, this body has, has heard that loud and clear. Um, and safety, uh, in our community was a real big identifier. And most of our chief plaque has moved forward with a panhandling ordinance, after taking a lot of input from the community. Um, and, and not only coming up with an ordinance, but coming up with an educational piece that actually will help the homeless people seek out the resources that they can actually use in our community, whether they need food, clothing, counseling, whatever it is. Um, and so, rather than being strong-handed about it, we've taken the approach of, let us show you how you can help yourself, um, which I think is, is a good step. So, those are the kinds of things where when we can get the community's input, uh, we can turn around and actually take action and make some things happen. And I think that this council's done a very good job of that, so I'm very proud of that. Um, so hopefully, we'll, we'll be more in touch, but maybe March 20th will be another step forward.
Uh, Madam Mayor, in follow-up, I would just offer that, uh, that the Town Hall meeting was hugely successful, I think, last year. Uh, we had five, uh, primary categories that were established with five, um, objectives for each of those categories. So, it was a 25 total goals and objectives. Uh, I think it's important that we stay connected with the citizens and the community. But I, I do wanna, uh, we've had a busy year and, and some adversities. And I, and I do wanna, uh, be careful that, uh, we don't get so far ahead in to-do list uh, without following through and making, uh, more of these things happen. I mean, my assessment, I went back and looked at the list, is that we probably have like a 50% rate success at this time. And again, there's been a lot of adversities. But I'd like to see us be able to follow through or follow up on those things that we established.
I actually think that this second Town Hall meeting is part of that follow-through. Um, some of the projects that we identified were not things that we could accomplish in three or four or five months. Um, and also, as just a note for the record, we did follow through with the one commitment that we did make to the group that attended. And that is, that we would have a report, um, that summarized everything that came out of that meeting, and we would provide that to the community. That report was generated by Mr. Butler, and he sent that out to every person that attended that meeting. And also, I believe, put it on our website, so that the entire community could access it.
And I do owe you an update, that I think will give you some more, better picture of where we stand on all of those 25. We'll do the same thing, go to council, it will go to each of the participants that provided their email address, and then we'll put it on the website as well.
And, and we'll maybe even email an invitation out to those people to get involved again.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, and then we also need to select a date for mid-year budget review.
Yes, Mr. McDonald's been cranking away on that. We had talked about actually coming back in March with the mid-year budget review, and he's indicating that he is probably gonna be ready to go ahead of that. he's indicating that he is probably going to be ready to go ahead of that schedule. It'll be kind of incorporating all of the changes that have happened so far to date in this current budget year that we're in, that started on July 1st. And then giving a general update on revenues and expenses as of February, which is a little bit beyond official mid-year but earlier than our original commitment. And then that'll be the last time that you really have to deal with the 2009-2010 budget. We will then immediately turn our attention to putting the next budget years together, budget together. That's the 2010-2011 budget. And the gauntlet has been thrown down to Ken McDonald that before he goes to his daughter's high school graduation in Hawaii in, I think it's late May, Memorial Day, this council will not only have seen a budget, but have approved a final 2010-2011 budget.
Can I get a, like a standing ovation?
Pressure's on now.
That's excellent. Yeah, well, we'll do our part. Having the information in a timely fashion is a very big step forward.
Is this a new part of a meeting, or is it a separate?
This would be a separate special workshop, I believe, so we can just focus on the work, on the budget.
Yeah, actually, that's the option we wanted you folks to discuss tonight. We can either do this, as Ken says, that he will be ready by the next council meeting, if you wanted to do it as part of your regular February 1st meeting. But you can also just dedicate time for a budget workshop, kind of like we've done in the past, and that would be possibly Monday, February 8th, if all of you were available on that date. So it's kind of an issue of whether you want to, you know, fold it into a regular meeting on the 1st or have a special dedicated budget.
I think when we do it on a regular meeting day, it makes for a very long night. And being, you know, trying to focus on numbers and business of the city all in one evening is a big task. I personally would prefer a special workshop.
I agree.
I would mind it on the off Monday, like the 8th, 22nd.
Want to go 4 o'clock? Is that too early as a start time? So we're not there too late, or do you want to?
How long do they?
Maybe two hours max this time.
I have a 4 o'clock meeting on the 8th, but it only lasts about a half hour.
Well, we normally meet at 5 o'clock. That's our normal start time, although it's a closed session.
That's fine.
That's fine for me.
5 o'clock is good for everybody.
On the 8th, 5 o'clock.
Great.
Here?
No, it will be Fire Hall.
Meet at the Fire Hall on Ice Street.
See Fire Hall.
Great. Excellent. Moving on to legislative matters. One thing I wanted to mention is tomorrow is the Coastal Cities meeting in Sacramento. They wanted me to attend because their meeting item, agenda item, is the Crescent City's LCP, Local Coastal Permit, because they found, the local cities group up and down the entire state of California has found it very interesting that the Coastal Commission is using Crescent City to kick off their...
Sea level rise.
Sea level rise initiative. So they're having that discussion. Obviously, I didn't want to go to the expense of traveling down there for a three-hour meeting, but we can participate by way of conference call. And I think it's important that our city planner and whatever you can do to participate would be great.
Yeah, between Michelle, Eric Taylor, and me, we've got it covered for the, I think the whole three hours.
Oh, good. Good. And so you have the conference call information and all that? Perfect. Any other legislative matters?
I mean?
Okay.
That's an oxymoron, isn't it? Sorry.
Did I say something?
No. Legislative matters. Matter?
You're an oxymoron.
I disagree with that.
Okay, reports, concerns, referrals. Mr. Burns?
Yes, we had a Delar Solid Waste meeting last week. And although it was a short meeting, the big issue, as you well know, is the franchises coming up, getting put out there requests for proposals. And we expect by this June to have a, be awarding a contract. And it's a big contract. It's for the next seven years.
Seven with an option to renew.
Yes. And it's a, it's a big deal. A lot of money involved, you know, trash is, recycling is, it's going to be interesting.
For those of the...
There'll be companies now that may be interested in bidding, which is really good for the Waste Authority because it will be very competitive.
Yeah. For those of you that wonder what we do on the Solid Waste Management Authority Board, Dennis and I sit on that board, and I was on the ad hoc committee that reviewed the previous franchise to the new franchise. And they're 80 pages in length and very cumbersome. And so I truly believe that the new franchise agreement will offer more to our residents. And hopefully with its competitive nature, possibly at a lesser rate, so that would be great. The one thing that I like to point out is that previously, a business owner couldn't sign up for garbage service unless it was like a dumpster. With the new franchise agreement, a business owner can actually sign up for regular garbage service and recycling service. And so I think that'll be a benefit to small businesses. So just a...
They won't have to self-haul or get a dumpster.
Right.
And the other thing is, don't forget next Monday, we have our...
Joint City and County.
Joint City and County meeting. And I believe, I haven't seen an agenda yet, but I think it's...
Yeah, we've got a draft.
Rather full.
What is the start time on that again?
Let's see, if you want to go on the wastewater treatment plant tour, 4 o'clock. And then the regular business meeting starts right here at 6. And I know we have discovered in the last couple of weeks that those of you that sit on Laughco, the Laughco meeting starts at 4, and the primary agenda item that night is the City of Crescent City MSR, Municipal Services Review. So the good news is Charles went on the recent tour that we did at the plant. But there's an issue. I think we may have to give Jerry Hemmingson his own little individual tour sometime because I think Jerry's going to have to be here for the Laughco meeting.
I think we can accommodate anybody that wants a tour.
Sure.
Whether it be on the 25th, because Jim's very flexible and accommodating. I was going to say flexible, but accommodating also to give people tours and give information out, which is...
Yeah, I already told Jerry that. Told him just to give Jim a call if he needed to and set up something. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Ms. Westfall?
I just wanted to clarify something that Dennis brought up, something about self-hauling. Is that still an option for people in the city?
There's no mandatory garbage pickup, that's all.
Okay.
Is any, anything else to report? Nope. Mr. Slert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got about a half dozen items here. I'd like to follow up regarding our court trees update.
Yes, I have had contact with Mr. Hunter Koffler within the last week. He's given me a list of trees, tree types, tree species that they're proposing. I can get that to Mr. Slert and Mr. Burns as our Court Trees Subcommittee members, have you take a look at that. They're planning on planting sometime in the next two to three weeks. They were slowed down because he oversees the courts, really all the way up and down the North Coast, but they had major damage at one of the court facilities in Eureka, and he's kind of been sidetracked by all that.
Was that caused from a tree?
I think a little earthquake.
Right. So, but it's definitely, I nagged him right after the last council meeting, and he has at least given me that step of what they plan to do in terms of the types of trees. And we can have that for you to look at.
Thank you. Also, are we going to get an update on the recall and sewer rate initiative cost to the city?
Yes, we do not have an invoice yet for that. I know that the last meeting I shared that there was an estimate given of somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000 total for the three items, the two recalls and the initiative. But we don't have an invoice yet because the work is still ongoing. The recall signature process, verification process has been completed, but the initiative is still ongoing.
But are there, aren't there also additional legal fees that are being tallied up and/or services?
With the new suits?
Yes.
Yeah, they're definitely tracking that.
Tracking all that.
And then I would like to say we had a hugely successful, I think, art walk last Friday. It was well-attended, even though the weather wasn't the best. So it was positive to see people downtown going from place to place. And then the, there was a request for ideas regarding the whale bones for the whale that was beached at South Beach. And so I've had a couple of people contact me. And one of the ideas was to put it in, reassembled the skeletal structure of the whale in Beachfront Park, maybe associated with Kids Town or associated with the Ring Mammal Center. And part of, I think it makes sense to think in terms of the master plan for Beachfront Park, and if that's an appropriate consideration. Another idea was to hang it from the rafters of the new airport terminal to greet guests as they come into town.
Did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
He said that's a whale of an idea.
I thought I said that low enough, but I wasn't.
I actually have a picture here. I can put my hand on it. But there's a skeleton of a large, I think, gray whale down in Santa Cruz that had been beached, and they ended up reassembling it. And you can actually walk through the structure of the whale, and it gives you a real sense of scale, and kids love to, they can actually climb around on it and play around with it. So that might have some merit. And then I guess the last thing I'd like to address is the recently failed recall attempt against myself and Ms. Murray. As you know, or may not know, I was defeated by a wide margin. The recall was a baseless and a factless, I think retaliatory political move. I think the people have spoken in by choosing not to sign the recall. And I would remind the city that we've had five recalls in the first year by Ms. Westfall. So there seems to be something wrong with this picture. It's yet another gross waste of the taxpayers' money and apparently considerable more legal fees yet to come regarding the forthcoming Westfall lawsuits. So again, I pose the question, was the benefit to the city? For myself, I see no benefit except for wasting the energies, the resources. And we have multiple items that we want to achieve, and the city has, citizens have mandated us to achieve regarding our Town Hall goals and objectives. So for me, it's time to put an end to the political issues that have been surrounding us and ask ourselves, how can we best serve the city? That's all.
Well, congratulations, you're going to be with us.
Thank you.
Continuing into the future. Thank you, Mr. Slert. We had an Elk Valley Rancheria slash city slash county, two-by-two, meeting, which just for all of us to kind of be in the same room and talk about the Rancheria project, we were excited to hear that their plans are moving forward. I think they have a very, I'm not sure what the word is, but they'd like to break ground this year. Not sure if that'll happen.
Ambitious.
Ambitious. Ambitious groundbreaking of this spring. I don't know if that'll happen or not, but the city and the county are working cooperatively to help them move that project forward. Very excited to have a project in our community that can provide up to 400 jobs. I think that will be an extreme benefit to our economic development. And so that was exciting. I know that on the political front, we've had Mr. Keen and Mr. Lamalfa visiting us several times in the past six to nine months, both running for senate for our district. Mr. Keen was here again last week, and I believe Mr. Lamalfa will be here during the chamber event. So just remind everybody to get involved in the process and let them be, let them hear us in our small rural community, and let them know that we want to be represented in Sacramento. And other than that, I am very excited about where we're at today. Moving forward from one successful Town Hall meeting to another has not happened in this city, and not sure if it has ever happened. Having our finances in order, our budget on track is extremely helpful as a city council person to help move this city forward in the right direction. And I... Yes, I did. Yeah, thanks. He thought I forgot something. And so I just want to continue to welcome you to these meetings and be a part of the process. With that being said, we will see you on February 1st at 6:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Or next Monday.